Lord, we're coming for you this afternoon, oh God. Just want to thank you, Lord, for another day. Thank you for your goodness and all your mercy, Lord. You've been so good and you've been so kind. Lord, we lift you up in this place right now. Touch each and every one of us, oh God. Cover us with your blood right now. Let your spirit dwell in him. Wrap us in your mercy right now, oh God. Give us communication, sweet communication, Lord. Lord, we thank you right now. Look on our mail, God. Continue to look at him, God, and encourage him as he lead West Memphis forward. And, Lord, you let us be obedient to the will that you have placed in front of us, oh God. Lord, we thank you this afternoon. And look on our garbage workers, God, and our trash pickups, God. Encourage them, God. Lift them up, oh God. Lord, you bless them in a special way. And continue to look on our first respondents, oh God. Continue to look on our fire department, the police department. Lord, we thank you for the city of West Memphis, because you've been so good and you've been so kind. Continue to cover it. Continue to fill it. Continue to lift it, God. Continue to let your mercy bind around here, through here, over here, and in here, God. In the name of Jesus. We thank you right now, God, for what you're doing and what you're going to do, oh God. Because, Lord, you have elevated us. And we thank you for the elevation, oh God. Glory to your name, Jesus. These are our blessings, in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen. Praise God.
Thank you all. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Mr. City Clerk, you do us the honor of calling the room.
Mayor McClain.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson, here. City Trade Suter. Councilmember Cat.
Here.
Councilmember Crum, here. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hope, here. Councilmember Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilmember Mohammed.
Present.
Councilmember Monday.
Here.
Councilmember Mary, here. Councilmember Willis, here.
Now, now, present. Before we get this room started, you all see our bid opening? You know that earlier I was planning to put in the back of the schedule of Troy's ordinance within the package. So, one of you all wishes to approve the rest of the bid opening. I give the motion to second to approve.
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Though the bid opening is approved. Minutes. Councilman Cat made one correction where even, uh, City Trade Suter was left out of the amendments. There was his own correction. Was there any other corrections to the minutes?
I give the motion, we approve the minutes as presented.
Second. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Start the third reading of our old meeting. Mr. City Attorney.
Third reading of an ordinance granting a special use permit for 312 Shady Grove, permitting a greenhouse and R2 low-density residential district.
We have heard this read for its third time. I give the motion to second to approve.
Second.
In discussion.
Make motion, pass.
Are we at the motion, second? In discussion?
The only discussion, Mayor, is this has come up before in Westwood Acres, and we denied that permit for the greenhouse. And I think that probably set a precedent for what we need to do. That's my opinion.
Ms. Mohammed.
This is Lorraine Mohammed speaking. Are there, to the person who's asking for this permission, are there any differences in this year and last year?
I actually think it's two different individuals, and I think this.
Is this the same greenhouse from the last year's one?
This is the one in Shady Grove.
This is in Shady Grove. So, basically, what are you wanting to do?
I think she's here. Yes, come on, man.
Good afternoon. I can barely hear what's going on. The only thing I can hear is greenhouse. So, was there any objections or?
We haven't voted yet, though.
Okay, I was thinking.
Mrs. Mohammed just wanted to know exactly what you're hearing.
But I'm Priscilla Tellis Ford, and I'm going to hopefully have a greenhouse built in Shady Grove, on Lincoln Street, on Shady Grove Street, to help the community out there. Y'all know that it is a poverty-stricken area, and I, this is not my first time being here. I think this is the last reading for the greenhouse. And so, I couldn't hardly hear anything back there, but I just yield the floor now. But I just want you all to know that I am the one that's wanting the greenhouse in Shady Grove.
Right. This is Mrs. Mohammed speaking. I'm over here. Can you hear me?
It's hard for me.
I know, with the mask on, sometimes it is kind of difficult. What I want you to know is, basically, this greenhouse, what are you planning to offer the community in this greenhouse? What are you going to have there?
Well, what I'm going to have, right now, I'm waiting on the United States Department of Agriculture to get in contact with me, because I do have a application on file with the United States Department of Agriculture, to have this greenhouse constructed. And this greenhouse will consist of vegetables, fruit trees, and other, other plants that the community could also help and to grow these things inside of the greenhouse. It's almost, it's going to be like a community effort, because I believe this is something that is really needed for the community health-wise. You know, it is an enhancement to this community. And that's just something that I want to reach out to the community and grow different vegetables, different types of fruit, so that the people can be more concerned, more conscious about their health. Start eating right. Start eating properly. And all of these things that I'm trying to get done within this greenhouse. I want to take it to another level. Eating hydroponics, growing vegetables in water, things of that nature. Anything that's going to be able to help the community to look out and to beautify the community to an area where I have been all my life. And there's not very much being done for this community. There's not very much being done for this community at all, and that is a shame, number one. And it's a low-income area, and we are West Memphis now. We've been annexed. And there's a lot that needs to go on. And since I have a chance to say something pertaining to the greenhouse, even that area needs more attention, people. It really does. The people need help down there. So, I believe I've said enough, but to answer your question, the greenhouse will consist of plant-based, you know, mainly plants, vegetables, fruit trees. And it's also, it's a business opportunity also for myself, because I do have a small greenhouse right now in my backyard where I grow vegetables. Because vegetables, food prices are sky-high. Everything is going up so high. It's ridiculous. So, that's what I will be utilizing the greenhouse for. And it will be a community effort for the people that's interested in having little spaces to grow small crops, because they don't have land. A lot of them don't have a place to grow, and to teach the community how to be self-sufficient in growing fruits and vegetables on their property.
Right. And that's, that's very, very wonderful, but I think I understood you to say that you have an application on file with the Department of Agriculture. Have you gotten anything solid and approved as yet?
Well, I am very excited about the fact that there's a great possibility that they may approve my application for it. But my thing is that I have petitions signed already, because I don't want to run up against a brick wall and try to have a greenhouse.
Right.
Because I feel that if you own land, you should have a right to have a greenhouse in your yard to be self-sufficient and grow your own food. You know, that's what, that's my feeling.
Right.
So, that application is on file. And I'm just here before you all, because I want to have everything lined up properly and with petitions signed, so I can move forward in the event when they pull my application. It won't be somebody coming forward and stopping me for having a greenhouse.
I do commend your efforts, but I think we are getting ahead of ourselves. If you don't have anything for sure that you can have this, I believe we should wait, in my own opinion, to give special use until we most certainly know for sure that the government has approved it.
No, wait a minute. I'm saying this here because it is on file. And even if the government does not approve it, unless, follow me and hear me closely. Even if the government doesn't approve it, and they do not pay to have my greenhouse built, I'm willing to have my own greenhouse built. Commitment for the planning commission, just like Planning Commissioner Lucas said. Before I do anything, get with him, and that's what I'm still planning on doing, regardless of the United States Department of Agriculture builds anything.
Now, I understood you to say that you already have a greenhouse in your backyard.
I have a small, I have a small greenhouse in my backyard where I grow vegetables, and it's there for the winter time for me to grow vegetables to feed my family. I do have a small one in my backyard.
But it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with, with profit or, it's just for your family only?
My family members, yes. It's for my family and to grow different things in my backyard, yeah. I have raised garden beds, too.
Right. The greenhouse you're talking about, getting a special use permit, will all of this be free to public, all the vegetables and things?
I'm not going to say everything will be free to public. If that's going to block me, no. I'm not going to say everything will be free.
I just want to make sure.
No, no, it will not.
Clear.
Everything won't just be free, no.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So, it will be for.
Get that understood, no, no.
I just wanted to make sure I got it perfectly clear, because we are being advertised, and people in the public, in the city, would like to know if you do this greenhouse, will they be able to just come and, and get their.
No.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had it clear, that's all.
Excuse me, Councilman Hope.
I think this is a lot different than the last one we had before us. We had complaints with neighbors, and I've not had a complaint. Trace and I have served your ward. Have you heard any complaints from anyone?
I've not heard any complaints, but I am, I did not realize this was going to be for a business-for-profit enterprise. I would assume this is a community event.
Who's talking? Okay.
Oh, and like I say, I have a business in a residential zone. I think opens up a different atmosphere.
I don't agree with that.
No.
Why would it open up a?
I'd have to ask Mr. Lucas to address that.
Because I asked me to keep on talking about, when you want to go against what I'm trying to do.
Excuse me. That's, that's how everyone talk, and that the council people, and you can't answer the question. But let them get their question out first, and you can go ahead.
Yeah, I would need to ask Mr. Luker to address that, if there is an issue with it at all.
Yeah, sure. So, what's, what's before you is the greenhouse, not any commercial activity. So, she could, if you approve it, she can grow her goods there. But if she wants to sell it, she would have to take it to a farmer's market or somewhere else. She could not sell them on site. That would be a violation. You're just giving her permission to have a greenhouse that she can grow stuff in. And the reason that she needs that permission is that this is not the lot that she lives on. This is a lot that does not have any structures on it. If it was on the lot that she lived on, then it wouldn't be before you. It'd just be an accessory structure if she could meet all her lot coverages and all. So, this is like the Auburn Street, except there's no neighbors complaining about it, and it's not, where she's positioned, it, it's not next to anybody's house. So, that, that's, that's the difference. They're, they're very similar, except that they, one had neighborhood opposition, this one does not.
Yes, I drove by and looked at the site, and like I say, when you said it was going to be a business, my concern was peak, because the road is not going to handle a business activity. But if you're taking their products off-site to a farmer's market, you're right. I'm, a different atmosphere.
And that's, and I just wanted to make sure before Ms. Tellis, thank you for coming, for standing up and speaking to the council. So glad to see you. I've worked with Ms. Tellis for years. I did not know that this was your particular greenhouse. This is Luker, why are you here? Why are you standing here, just so that we can conclude? This is, this is where she will be growing her products. Again, this is not a business. So, I, I'm trying to make sure that we're all on the same page and not getting too stereotyped that she's going to be growing it for a business purpose. This is to grow her vegetables, just as the other one was. But the difference is location. Can I understand and agree? The difference between this one and Auburn is just the location, there are no.
It's, it's the location that she's just not getting anybody complaining about it.
Correct.
Okay? The ability for her to grow is, is fine. She just can't sell on site.
Absolutely. And that's understood. That's what I want to make sure you understand, this is not easy.
Right. That would take us over.
Great. Thank you, thank you. And thank you for taking the time, Ms. Tellis, to explain that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Crum.
This scenario sounds almost exactly like the last one we had, except they actually had their USDA grant to build. And the only difference in these two are, one of them had complaints and one didn't. My, my question is going to be the city attorney, is this going to open up a, a opportunity for a?
Well, I remember there being some other issues, too, about subdivisions being laid out and things like that, as I recall, and issues about if we were wanted to sometime expand, and we didn't want to have somebody back there when the subdivision hadn't been laid out yet, and there weren't roads to it. I remember that being another issue. So, I think it is a little bit different. You know, I don't think it, if you decide to approve this because nobody's objecting to it, that makes it different as well. So, I don't think it is exactly the same. I don't think it's exactly the same.
Excuse me, I seen, are you opposing this?
Yes.
Are you opposing?
I mean, I'm not opposed to the greenhouse, but it's just.
Can you come, can you come forward, please? Instead, your name for the record.
Hi. My name is Louisa, and I own the property of 308.
Address.
That's what I'm saying. We didn't know anything about a greenhouse. And it wasn't until we came out last weekend to check our property that all the trees had been removed. So, and, I mean, like I said, I'm not opposing the greenhouse. I just would ask if there'd be some diligent somewhat part to do some sort of survey, determine where her property lies, starts and stops. Because our property, all of our trees on our property have been cut down. And we didn't know anything about it. No one asked, nothing. It wasn't until yesterday, trying to find somebody in the city to explain to me what was going on. I know it's an empty lot, but nobody could tell me what's going on. They just told me to be here by 1:00 o'clock today. And this is the first I'm here about a greenhouse.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Could you give us the name and address for the record?
Okay. My home address is 977 Allen in South Cityville. But I own the property at 308 Shady Grove.
What's your name?
Louisa.
Thank you all. Turn it over to the council.
Thank you all.
All right. End of discussion. We got a motion to second. Hold on, I have the city clerk. The city clerk, will you call the room?
Yes. Councilmember Cat.
Yes.
Councilmember Crum.
No.
Councilmember Crum goes no. Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris goes yes. Councilmember Hope.
Yes.
Councilmember Hope goes yes. Councilmember Hutchinson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchinson goes yes. Councilmember Mohammed.
Pass.
Councilmember Mohammed passed. Councilmember Monday.
Yes.
Councilmember Monday goes yes. Councilmember Mary.
Yes.
Councilmember Mary goes yes. Councilmember Willis.
No.
No. Councilmember Willis goes no. Six yeses, two no's, and one picket.
The man passes.
Pass.
Can you give the ordinance number, Mr. City Clerk?
It's going to be, it's going to be ordinance 257.
257?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, I'm sorry, third reading now, it's the second one.
Third reading of an ordinance to amend section 38-45 of the West Memphis Municipal Code for the purpose of levying an additional 1% tax for a total of 3% upon the gross receipts or gross proceeds from the rental or certain accommodations of certain accommodations and the sale of prepared foods and beverages as authorized by ACA Section 26-75-602 and for other purposes.
Are we adhering to the brand for the third time? I give the motion to second to approve.
Don't move.
I give the second.
Second.
In discussion?
Right.
Councilman Cat.
During our budget meetings, you know, we, the man made several cuts, especially in the general fund, all on the preemptive situation of waiting for the economy, not so much economy, but our business to be back open at 100%. People being able to go out and get their jobs back. When we read this at the last council meeting, you were going to have a meeting. Again, I haven't heard anything necessarily about that per se, or a public meeting goes. I am not in favor of passing this today. I'm not saying it's off the table for consideration, but I'm going to have to go right back to where I was in January. Until our businesses can open back up 100% and folks can go back out and find jobs again, I'm, I'm going to have to wait till July 1st and then make decisions going forward. And you and I have visited. To me, one of the biggest issues we have in our community is bringing people here. You had several ideas that you discussed last year. I discussed a few things with you last week. Again, as part of getting together next week, can we sit down and do some long-term planning that would actually bring people to the community who are going to be here for two or three days, that are actually going to be spending money and renting rooms and things of that nature before you make your final decision on this? But that's my position on it.
Anyone else?
I think, I think everybody knows. I feel about this, this 1% increase with the small businesses and all. And I think the timing is just not right. I'll agree with the Council Cat, that it just seems like we ought to wait. We're still under COVID restrictions. Excuse me. We just, we just raised the mileage. We just raised the water rates. We just raised the garbage rates. And I just feel like that this is something that needs to be tabled indefinitely until we get ourselves in shape.
Councilman Hope.
Well, I've been up and down on this myself, and I talked to a lady this morning. And I explained to her that our last administration actually killed a lot of our parks budget. We've not come back on the park budget in, in a long time. And what I was telling her is our parks are in not real good shape. I feel like there's a need for some extra money to actually redo these parks. And I understand we're going to, going to hire a person that's going to work with a park director and will understand bringing softball teams, different things, and actually rebuild the parks. My thing is, this is only going to happen by June, by June. The state parks, I will be open up before June. Texas opened up. Mississippi's opened up. Basically, if you go around some big restaurants, who I've been here lately, they, they open themselves up, some of them have. You know, and I think this is all going to be behind us by June. I have a feeling it will be. My theory is that we really need to do some, some renovation. We always talk about infrastructure, different things. And I understand we're going to open up the, she asked a question about these buildings we built, and I understand we're going to start opening those up. So, is that right, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was one of her concerns. Part of it was, she thought it was going to be 3 cents, and I said, no, it's only going to be another 1%, which would be added to the 2%. So, I, I just think that we really need to look at it real close. It's going to be June before it actually happens. And I think, well, I might, I should for it.
I would, this is Lorraine Mohammed. I would, now, of course, I, I'm not opposing this at all, because we have to generate money. Will the revenue flex that this money will go exclusively to parks?
Actually, actually, Councilman Mohammed, how the AMP structure here, anything from the AMP can't go into the general fund.
Why?
If we go into a park, they can't fund parks. But the money that we use out of the general fund to fund parks, we will have to use that money because of additional money from the AMP now for fund, not all of them, a lot of that department. So, that money that we use in general fund, we're getting for services in the general fund, which they can buy from the budget, 69% in politics for our AMB.
So, what you're saying here, Lorraine Mohammed again, what you're saying here is that we're going to kind of flip, slot it. Is that, is that right? The money that, that this would possibly generate would go into the parks, and the money that's in the parks budget, budget will just stay in the general fund to be used for other issues.
Councilwoman Hutchinson.
Mayor, as I have asked before, what do you have in plans specifically?
Let me, let me begin. My speech, gentlemen, I think that's going to answer all of your questions. I respect this city council role in the budgeting process. I came from this council after serving 16 years, so I understand what situation you're all in. But today, I stand here before you as the CEO of this city. It is my duty and my obligation to offer up solutions that will take this city from where we are today to where we need to give the bridge in and do it responsibly. Per Arkansas 14-43-502, Section B says, "The council shall have the management and control of the finances." Now, respectfully, that's you all, child. I shouldn't even have to be telling them that idea when we all know what situation the general fund is in. We're saying that it is my duty to bring malice before you. Nobody like taxes or fees, no money. But we sit here today as meaning women that have a fiduciary responsibility to our city. Sometimes we must take bold, necessary, and even sometimes unpopular position to do what is right for the future of our city. This is one of those moments. I have presented this by several plans to address this over the last several months. Some members were open to it, and some others had other options. But we all agree that something had to be done. Like all of you, I ran for office, saying that I would do everything that I could not to raise taxes. And I believe as a team, you and I, have been accountable and living up to that. But sometimes you have to make the tough and responsible choices based on the current information and situations at hand. That is what leadership is about, moving and adjusting with the demand of times. This is why we were elected. I have asked you all to submit ideas and proposals for the last several meetings. It's easy just to say no, but we were elected to come up with solutions that the people, for the people that we serve. Not just to say no without a solution, it's pointless. After careful delivery and thoughtful consultation with many of you, with our finance director, and even I have talked to some of the businesses, not all of them, but a lot of small businesses that were saying concern, even the biggest, Jonathan Caldwell, Ed Giffel, and citizens that will be impacted. My proposal is a 1% increase of an AMP tax. Why did I choose this route? My proposal is a one percent increase of an AMP tax. Why did I choose this route? Because as you know, there is one cent tax that was passed by the people on the hospital. The tax has now sunsetted. Now, every business in the city will see a reduction in their sales tax if approved and sell the rest of our supplies, which will continue to be the same that they've been paying for the last five years, no more for the last century. The AMP tax has the least amount of impact on our citizens, but with the biggest payback. Now, I'm not saying there are people in our community that won't feel the impact, but our data shows that almost all the people that use our hotels are from out of town. Our local citizens, either our restaurants, including myself, but families from surrounding cities and downtown Memphis, and travelers on the interstate also, for our residents. The AMP tax does not affect our shopping at Big Star, Kroger's, Walgreen, or Walmart, or by the way, clothing stores, even that simple American furniture store. It doesn't affect stores like that. So, I would like to address some of the concerns that the council not thinking more through must approve this book of. Yes, the people of West Memphis voted to increase the school minutes to thirty-six point five percent, which still makes West Memphis the sixth lowest mileage in the state compared to our neighbors right above us, Maryland. That means it's forty-five point seven percent. Our people wanted our children to be better educated, give our children a great place to learn, and a conducive place for our teachers to teach our brilliant minds. Now, if you think education is expensive, wait till you see how much ignorance costs. That mileage allowed our school system to advance seventy million dollars in new business, buildings for our students. Now, the mileage, was that mileage an increase or was it an investment in educating the future of our lives? I went into a L R, I mean, Jack, Jackson one, and I think that's one of the best facilities out of Illinois. And I got two townspeople that teach there and works there that know that. That mileage was not an increase, it was an investment in our future. You spoke about the water rates. I guess some of us missed the memo that we had sinkholes falling in our streets for the city and fixing and adding pumps to our city that help to flood and up our community. Did you all miss the memo where our water rates is the lowest in the state and continue to be the lowest after the increase in the state? Not to mention we have the second lowest utility rates in the state. Now, is, was that an increase or an investment back in our city's infrastructure and streets? You spoke of the garbage rates. Once I was elected, I was challenged by the people, I was challenged by this council to clean the city up and move our sanitation into the twenty-first century and bring about curbside pickup. To do that, we had to purchase enough cans for every citizen to have at least one. I have also rearranged the sanitation department that later this year, we would save fun by adding a demolition department to our sanitation department, and we'll be touching the empty lot to clean our community, especially on the east end of town. You all voted for that ordinance. How did you think it was gonna get paid for? It just don't pay for itself. So, is that an increase or is that an investment to keep our city cleaner? Which we all know a cleaning city is a safety city. Now, the room leaders, the mayor, is always spending the budget. Could not be far from the truth, and I don't understand why we keep talking about P three. Because we don't pay P three until April twenty-third, April, and year twenty-one. And this is a right now problem. So, let me give you a little math one-on-one. If you, you, you all approved me a twenty million dollar budget, and I spent nineteen point four million. I actually saved six hundred thousand in the budget, but if the budget did not generate nothing but nineteen million, it goes to show you that it's something that you all according to the law fourteen forty-three five oh two said. If you all responsible, it's not mine. Either you all cut the budget or come with a way to add one to that budget. Now, I have a finance director who is much smarter than me in finance, who agreed with me that something has to be done in the general fund. Now, so it's, so it's not the administration doing anything wrong to the general fund, it just not to do, unless they're open to say, to say that we are millions of dollars in debt. I'm gonna quote my new city clerk, uh, city clerk, what he was saying. It's against Arkansas state law to pass a deficit budget. That's why Councilman Kent went back and cut along things in the budget, and you all worked with him and approved it. So, we could approve a budget and not a deficit budget. So, we are not millions of dollars in debt. So, that, that statement of faith, what I read, I, I just leave that alone, but that's not true. And we also, you all, when you talk about P three, you build two new fire stations, and I believe that. A choir out there we proud of, the library, I think, is the best building in the city, police substation. Now, I ask you all, was that an increase or an investment to our citizens? You know, realistic situation, there is a hand. We have a dilemma. You all approved six new permit for the city. Right for the soul, after the ambulance service, after one of our ambulance services went out of notice, and one is offering limited service. Our EMF service has made a record four hundred emergency calls monthly for at least the last six months during this pandemic. So, we needed that. But you forgot that, that was an additional four hundred and four one thousand, seven hundred, and four seven thousand that were going to our general fund in salaries and benefits. This one percent sale tax would reduce seven hundred and two thousand for the city. Half of which would go to our parks, and the other half would go to the area. But you have just started wondering, what was the AMP was gonna do with that? Pop, it's a possibility of refurbishing our auditorium and civic centers to promote more events and competition that would produce more people in our city. Now, guess we need dance competitions, dance competitions come to West Memphis. Do they stay with Councilman Willis? No. Please stand on table. Do they eat at Councilman Willis' house? No. They eat at the restaurant. So, with this investment, as you all see on the screen, these continue to benefit our city. Now, this is a real point. I know many of you are of use our EMF service. Our EMF service is running efficient to save lives. But when you look and say that one has one other business and one is limited, right now during this pandemic, as mayor, I would not be happy if someone called nine one one and didn't get the service that they need. Because the ambulance, fire, and police are the essential, are the basic services that we as a city should always, at any cost, hire with me, call, turn to the director. If they're gonna continue, once we get that together, I'm not saying I'm hiring now if you all approve it, but maybe only you, once we get everything up and going. Yes, if that person gonna continue to bring in attorneys, they're gonna allow people to stay and eat here, why not? Now, I ask you once again, is that an increase in AMP taxes or an investment to ensure our medical, uh, service and parks and tourists in that emotion? Now, this is for the year. I want you all to think about that. For the last five years, at a restaurant or hotel, which many of us don't live in a hotel, you all, we all, they all been paying twelve point zero seven five for the last five years. This one percent AMP tax, it goes up one percent. But guess what? The one percent on the hospital has sunsetted, so guess how much money that our citizens or businesses will be paying? The same amount they've been paying for the last five years. So, it's not an increase. I'm never gonna say it's paying on, not paying on my money, because I'm not, I can't speak in it on my pocket. But it's not an increase. It's the exact same thing. It's an increase in the AMP itself, but for the overall taxes, it's the same because it dropped one percent. So, you're not paying no more tomorrow with your first, than you were paying two dot sixteen, two dot seventeen, two dot eighteen, two dot nineteen. How many of our citizens stays in our hotel? I eat at the restaurant probably more than either one of these room. But I ain't nothing with the chicken, right? About nine hundred milli- cent a week. I win up one cent, which is nonsense, but the hospital tax dropped, which can cut it off nine cent. So, I'm paying the exact same thing I've been paying. It's not an increase. Now, I believe that this is the first and most practical way that you have the necessary revenue to allow us to continue doing the things necessary to move West Memphis forward. And this will have the smallest impact on, that will have the smallest impact on our citizens. I quote, Councilman Kent, once again, "West Memphis is the most cost-efficient city to live." Let me remind you, West Memphis is the sixth lowest in the state, not within the county, but in the state in property tax. West Memphis has the lowest water rates in the state, not just within the county, but the state. West Memphis also has the second lowest utility rate in the state. Our fire, ISO rate is a one, which makes sure our insurance, fire insurance stays down. We have a nine point seven five sale tax. And if you look at our neighbors right above us, Maryland, they got ten point two five. Our AMP tax will remain at twelve point seven five if this bridge is passed, the same as it has been for the last five years. Now, I ask you for a final time, if you have a solution that's better, that has the least impact on our community, tell me now, if not the reimbursement back into our city was started June first and is the same money you have paid for the last five years?
Excuse me, Mayor Clinton, beautiful oration, but I think we are ready for the vote.
Well, I, I, that's your main right there.
All right, sounds good.
Mr. Butler, you call it off.
Councilmember Kent?
No.
Councilmember Kent voted no. Councilmember Crum?
No.
Councilmember Crum voted no. Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
And Harris voted yes. Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
And Hope voted yes. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hudson voted yes. Councilmember Mohammed?
Yes.
Councilmember Mohammed voted yes. Councilmember Manu?
Yes.
Councilmember Manu voted yes. Councilmember Mary?
Yes.
And Mary voted yes. Councilmember Willis?
No.
Councilmember Willis voted no. Six yeses and three no's.
Well, that raises a mess. Thank you. Can we get a?
Twenty-five seventy-one.
Twenty-five seventy?
Mayor Clinton, I know the motion has passed, but I'm sitting here looking at all of the projects for the parks in twenty twenty-one. There are about fifteen of them or more. And of course, if this money's going back, there are just so many things citywide that needs to be done in our parks. And that's basically one of the reasons I voted for that, looking at all of these. And I will pass everybody a copy of this out after the meeting.
Councilman Kent?
Yes, Mayor. Again, I would like for us to meet next week and talk about long-term solutions to our problem and not the short-term fix that was just passed. This is not gonna correct all of our issues that we know are forthcoming. And again, as I said, you have presented several ideas. We need to look at how we're gonna fund that. I think the one cent sale tax with a sunset is an avenue we need to sit down and talk about as opposed to this. But again, we will move forward regardless.
So, you, uh, your goal is to, uh, sit down and talk about another one percent sale tax or everything?
No, sir. From my standpoint, this would be removed, and the one cent sale tax would just be in its place. It would be across the board. I'm the first to agree with that. It'd be the exact same thing everybody's paying now. But it gives the city a much longer-term, stable revenue source than this does. It allows you to do much better planning. It allows you to look at how you're gonna improve upon the city to bring people to us from Tennessee, Mississippi, Missouri, wherever, for whatever type of event, an arena or sports complex, or a water park, or anything else may attract people to. But we need to look at how we bring people here to.
I'm definitely open for that. I just knew that I didn't see a solution. And I welcome any ideas that we got to bring forward.
Again, because this is only a small percentage of a twenty million dollar budget, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. My standpoint, the council would just simply approve that without doing anything down this line until we did more long-term planning. But again, we will move forward again and, and do what's best for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Hudson?
Councilman Kent, repeat that. That's part of what you just said. You said the council just, repeat it so I can understand what you just said. You said we just passed this, say that, that's part of what you just said.
For the council, the three hundred fifty thousand dollars that this would generate, the council could amend the budget to take the three hundred fifty thousand dollars out of your reserves without doing the one cent AMP tax. That would have got you through twenty twenty-one. Again, as far as trying to do some long-term planning, you wanna look at a revenue source that's gonna be consistent. The sale tax is one mode of considering things. But we're gonna have to look at, how do we bring people to our community? Right now, you're coming here for, we need to bring people here for a reason. And again, as the mayor said, and I've said a thousand times, West Memphis is a very cost-effective place to live. This is the same place we were, but to me, this is a short-term solution. What I'd rather be looking at is a long-term solution. Hopefully, we can talk about that next week.
All right. Harris?
Well, all of us sitting on this board, come up with our, we come together with our thoughts together. And whenever you come up with a thing, someone else come up with, that would connect us together. Because we, we work it together, so we gotta come together, come up with ideas. And we, and we're creating a utility rate that's so low right now, and I can verify it because the decision was made fifteen years ago. Am I right, Tom? That's why we enjoy the utilities like we are. And most of councilmembers didn't like that, but I voted with them, and we got it.
Is there nothing else? You have more than these businesses? City attorney?
I'd like to make a motion that we use R one, R one and R two, like I had one.
I get second? All right, favor I?
Aye.
Vote. Uh, I think I hear that, what's the, what you said, the council's a table, R one?
Yeah, we're sitting at table, R one is definitely.
Well, it was discussed in pre-council. There's been no formal vote on that, Mayor.
But it is.
As you stated, the governor went ahead and signed it yesterday. It is, and you can point it just out.
The motion on the, on the floor.
Well, I, I, you all have to make it, but I was just wondering, did you still wanna pay just to show a sign of solidarity or you just gonna let it go?
I just think we're gonna let it go.
I made a motion we table on, definitely.
Second?
Second.
All right, favor I?
Aye.
Vote, this table. O one, city attorney?
All right. O one is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
All right, Henry Redd for the first time, uh?
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, uh, this has really become a repetitive, I don't think they've raised their fees in how long? If I remember correctly, I think it's been four, five years.
It's been the same since something like.
Um, I mean, we can read it out over the next few weeks, but of all the things that we handled, this one has been the most consistent financially speaking that I can recall.
You'd like to read it for a second time, just read it out for a third time, two weeks?
Make a motion to suspend the rule, placing on second read.
Second?
Second.
All right, favor I?
Aye.
Vote. City attorney?
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for aerial spraying, ground spraying, and other mosquito control efforts and for other purposes.
All right, we're here for the second time. We'll be back on the agenda in two weeks, but it's finally, O two?
O two is an ordinance authorizing the senior deputy city clerk to attest the mayor's signature when he, she has received written communication from the elected city clerk and for other purposes.
Can I get a motion to second to suspend this rule someplace on the second read?
I'll go with.
All right, favor I?
Aye.
Vote, it's on the second read.
An ordinance authorizing the senior deputy city clerk to attest the mayor's signature when he, she has received written communication from the elected city clerk and for other purposes.
Well, I guess it'll be back on this, uh, two weeks on the third read. I just like to see the little change, you know, go from there.
What was the change?
You have the city clerk's management.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Here, my head. Uh, we definitely want city attorney, and definitely need to visit with the finance director. Are there any situations throughout the year where we're on less than that thirty-day time schedule? I mean, I know some things we have to pay with ten days. Is there a situation by the time things drop through the system? Are we getting down to where we gotta get the assignment done in twenty-four hours? I'd like to visit and make sure that we've got all, everything handled.
Sure. We have on the agenda the request from the Parks Department represented during the budget hearing about the administrative assistant, parks coordinator for the parks. I would, if this position is approved by you all today, I would not be hiring today. I'd be retiring once we got the parks up and running, once the position was already approved, so. Can I get a motion in second to approve?
I'd make a motion.
I get second. In discussion.
Why do we need to approve it today? I mean, what's the urgency?
Well, it is, it's, you know, I mean, it would just be approved, but it is a, it's you all's decision on that.
I would, I would, is there a motion on the floor?
There's a motion.
I would, uh, my personal opinion is, is like, okay, Councilman Mohammed was talking. I would wait until we were ready for this position and then approve it.
Uh, this, uh, this is an ordinance. Second, maybe?
No, we're just trying to figure out who's second in motion, you know, maybe. I think, um, Cat, you made, you made a motion.
I'd make a, uh, I guess I knew somebody made a motion at this one, we know.
My, my thing on this position, however you all do this, we're going to be fine, but, you know, um, and I'm not talking to this council, I'm just making a brief statement. I think my word, I have proved that my word is fun when I tell you that something. I think you said that every budget that we approved, the hard work that this administration have made, the accommodate for the budget, so if you prove it today or you don't, it's fine. But if I tell you that I'm not going to hire for the position that you proved today, you won't take it in the main. And if I was paying a high report today, I would tell you. Because I, 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 I'm kind of feeling like the old clerk used to always say that the majority of the people in West Memphis elected me to the position, no one else. But if you all approve it, you have my word. I'm not going to hire for it right now until our park is up to where it needs to be. And if you don't, it's fine. Mr. Cat?
When the twenty twenty-one budget was approved, there was an open slot within that department. Um, and I'll have to get with Ms. Perry, she, she had to leave. I want to say that the dollars were very, very close to what the mayor indicated this position was going to pay. So I don't think there was really much of a budget amendment, but I need to get with her to get that exact number for you.
I think when that budget passed, that's the fashion of parks with a budget to hire someone.
Yes, I think you did.
And, but what I would like to share is when we look at the person, not how someone has gone to be learning, but how someone has had the experience to be with it.
I agree. All right. Mr. Scott, call roll. Read.
Councilmember Cat?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Pass.
Councilmember Harris? Yes. Councilmember Hope?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Hudson? Oh, yes. Councilmember Mohammed?
Yes.
Councilmember Monday? Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilman Willis?
Pass.
Yeah. Yeah. One yeses. Two yeses, and three passes, and.
You got five yeses. You got five yeses, you have two passes. And you have, you have five, five passes, uh, three.
You vote yes for my?
Yes, yes.
Really? I'm going to say more than Sarah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, the mayor is the size of a boat, yes, if you match the passes. All right. Last thing on the agenda, well, not the last thing on the agenda, but this, uh, the state of the city.
Can I ask one question? Did we get a second on that? That's what I, I know he's, he, uh, Mr. Hope made a motion, but we never get a second. Huh?
It's Harris' second.
It's Harris' second? Okay, okay. Well, I'm sorry. Okay, I know. That's how I was listening, I wasn't here.
All right. We'll move forward with the state of the city. First of all, allow me to acknowledge the West Memphis City Council members. Councilman Crone, Willis, Mohammed, Murray, Harris, Monday, Hudson, Cat, Hope, and former councilman, Poot. I thank them for the overwhelming support in making this administration vision become a reality. I thank them for the leadership. We may not always agree, but they have played a very important role in making these things possible. In accordance to the Arkansas State Law, I must give a state of the city address in which detailed our accomplishments, problems, and solutions. Where we are going to succeed under this administration. Maya Angelou once said, "All great achievements require time, but we must start now." This administration promised transparency to the people and this governing body. In two thousand and eighteen, the administration fulfilled a lot of the commitments to the people of West Memphis. We understood that the potential of this city is endless. With the completion of our twenty forty program, West Memphis saw as much as a half a billion dollars of capital investment, infrastructure, and construction happen in twenty nineteen through the end of twenty twenty, under the, under the McClendon administration, which included seven two hundred and fifty million dollar investment, Carvana, Coca-Cola. We had several new businesses to open during that time, La Quinta Inn, True By Hill, and Bio Carson, just to name a few. Our city witnessed record growth in such a short time. Between twenty nineteen ending and twenty twenty, we had over fifty R F I's completed, six active projects, over fourteen hundred new jobs created. We certified the largest industrial site in Arkansas. We have two census tracts designated as opportunity zones, greatly enhanced our marketing materials, improved private, public and private partnerships, and launched new and improved citywide website and medical site landing page for the city. I must acknowledge the economic development department team, Phil Sorera and Maddy Darby. We also placed, this council placed a hundred young people to work in our summer jobs program, but begun construction of five new municipal buildings, library, true forest station, a police substation, and a municipal court building. A twelve million dollar bond was passed by the people to revitalize our parks for a better quality of life for our citizens, which included to begin once this pandemic subsides. I supported our school district millage investment that helped to build a new wonder, West, uh, West Junior High, which makes all our schools newly rebuilt or renovated. This administration and council gave the biggest raise to our city employees, to our emergency employees, and other departments in history. We set a citywide fourteen dollars an hour memo way for our city employees as well. We created a D B A for minority and women so that they would have a fresh shot again obtaining city bids. Through the continued smart management, our utilities still continue to have the lowest water rates and the second lowest utility rates in the city, in the state, I'm sorry, in exploring the possibilities of offering broadband internet service to our city. I thank Todd Peterson, War Wimberch, and Terry Fitzgerald for their service. This administration challenged planning and development to help clean this city. We hired a co-enforcement officer. We tore down over sixty-two dilapidated properties in the city, the most at any time ever. I'm proud to announce that this administration has started the West Memphis first land bank after years of trying to get it together. Parts of West Memphis have concentrated on vacant buildings and parcels that are not contributing to the validity of the neighborhoods, a better and brighter future for West Memphis hinges on their ability to create new and rehabilitate vacant housing and businesses in these areas to serve both people who currently live and attract new residents to help the city of West Memphis grow. I want to thank Paul Luca and Kenneth Johnson and the entire planning department. Sadly, we bid a farewell to the passing of a man who served forty years of his life of commitments and service to the city of West Memphis, our former mayor, William A. Johnson. We entered into twenty twenty full steam ahead, looking to continue our win streak. We finally started to get the community by hand, where hope became more than just a word, but became something of substance that we can and we can believe in. As revitalization, as revitalization became a real goal for our community revitalization on the east end of Broadway. Our focus became cleaning our city. We provided a large dumpster to every wall so that the homeowners could dispose of garbage and bulk. This administration and council also implemented curbside service by bringing our sanitation, our sanitation department to the twenty-first century and giving our citizens a blue trash can. The administration created a plan to reorganize Public Works where we would begin later this year to start to cut our vacant lots and demo vacant homes within our community. I want to thank Amanda Hicks and Michael Bonner for their leadership in Public Works. Crime continued to decline for the second consecutive year. The year before I became mayor, we had fourteen homicides. My first year in two thousand and nineteen, we had eight, and we ended twenty twenty this year with only five, with a major reduction in assaults, violations, and theft. We know one homicide hurt our community, but our goal is to reduce crime in every year that I'm in office. And I want to thank Chief Eddie West and former chief Robert Nixon for their support. If we look forward to another great year, we begin with that prayer briefing that set the tone for the year. I'm a man who walks by faith and not by sight. Every morning I walk into my office and I drop down to my knees and I ask God to decrease Marco, and he increase and allow me to be the vessel, and I will surrender to his will. So I like to say that the city is being led by a Godly man. A foreign enemy was making itself known to this, to the world. The COVID nineteen virus became clear throughout our nation that it would change, change our life as we know it. Meeting with Dr. Hashman, Dr. Jones, the county, state health department, and also creating a COVID task force, we prepared ourselves best as we could. Our medical examiner, Dr. Hashman, discovered our first case of the coronavirus here in West Memphis. After several new cases, the council and administration stepped into action before the state had passed a resolution recommending that masks be worn when in public areas. Shortly afterwards, Governor Hudson closed down South Gaming Racing. Several other businesses closed following that state mandate. Once again, the council and administration stepped up to the challenge by approving one hundred thousand dollar COVID package from C D B G to help assist those affected by COVID with utility assistance, including small businesses, the homeless, single citizens, P P E, hotels, and testing. Dr. Jones and the East Arkansas Health Center went to, went into action with a drive-through testing site for West Memphis. Other nonprofits, uh, Good Neighbor, Sherk Collaborative, and citizens stepped in with their support for the love of this community. And acting chief, Dwayne Rose, and EMS director, uh, Clay of our EMS also stepped in to challenge and started making records, EMS calls, and serve the county if needed. All while continuing to keep a far greater of our I S O rating of one. I thank Dr. Jones in East Arkansas, director Rose now, Dr. Hashman, and Chief Clay and their leadership. Tough decisions had to be made closing parks, churches, went to outside services. Our schools were closed, and we started to see loved ones get sick and die. After seeing all of the public service announcements, large gatherings, and COVID numbers continued to rise, I received national attention during an address to the city by saying, "Stay home at home." That message resonated with many who felt the same way and others all around the country. As our city and nation suffered from COVID, West Memphis showed the best it had to offer with our partnership between our city and local businesses. We collectively placed the faces of our high school seniors graduates along Main Street poles on Broadway to honor their accomplishments and education. It also brought the best in our local businesses when Tim and Pancho's fed our, fed our emergency service personnel and West Memphis citizens for free every day. I haven't heard of no other restaurant in the mid-south that done this, so I support Pancho's for that. Different organizations, fraternities, sorority, and churches worked to give out P P E while they were informing and raising individuals for the decade census. As West Memphis faced hard time, I received a call, I received a call that I missed, two phone calls. The first was an early, early morning call that I missed to return to justify now unexpected passing of our city treasurer and finance director Frank, Mr. West Memphis Mark, who always said, "You may love West Memphis as much as I do, but not more than I do." Just five days later, we suffered another loss of a great man, our branch chief, Dennis Brewer, who said, "A man is sharpened through the flames, but made stronger through the trials." Our city also suffered the loss of city family members Jenny Calley and Freddie Stokes later that year. During these tough times, Tori Perry had large shoes to fill in finance. She stepped in and have done a great job, and Lola L. Alloway continued to lead the way and setting the tone of excellence by showing unbelievable leadership to the city of West Memphis. I thank Tori Perry and Ms. Lola Alloway. While continuing praying for our city, good things were happening. A new exciting restaurant decided to make West Memphis their home. Chick-fil-A, the most anticipated restaurant, had opened. It was a sign of a great things to happen. Also, not one, not two, but three medical marijuana dispensaries opened in West Memphis. We also purchased and received three ambulances and also started and completed construction on the city's first dog park. COVID had to spike here in our county with record number. We hoped that a vaccine was on its way so we could get back to our win streak. In closing, it's amazing the potential of this city. If we can just get past the political posture and agree to disagree, think outside the box, dare to be different and bold by pushing the limits of our city's natural ability. West Memphis was named the wonder city because of our forefathers had vision and believed in it. When Mayor Hallenheiser was faced with settling the utility department, he fought and refused because he knew what the utility department would mean to us today. They knew when establishing West Memphis, they believed it was a gold mine. The people believed it could become the fastest-growing city in eastern Arkansas, and it did. When Mayor Eaglehead had a vision to help our city flooded, and no one else seen it at the time, but it was because that vision that instructed War Wimberch to design our water system that helped keep many parts of West Memphis from flooding. Now, in closing, my Bible tells me, a people without vision would surely perish. I have a vision. It's okay that some of you may not see it, but God gave me this vision, and God chose me. I will continue coming to you all about things the majority of our people of the city elected me to do. Our city deserves the best. They deserve leaders that fight for them, leaders that would take or stand for what's right, leaders that would remove their own personal agenda and place them first. I'm ready once again to work with this governing body and work together and we move West Memphis forward to an unbelievable heights. God bless you, and God bless the city of West Memphis. No permission requests, uh, committee reports. Uh, we'll start with police.
Yes, sir. The police department commission met, uh, yesterday, March third, Wednesday, March. There, I have a brief narrative for you. Uh, the chairperson selected by the commissioners for the years, Lorraine Mohammed, Secretary of Snell and Hutchinson. The date of the meeting is first, the first Monday of each month. The time of the meeting will be at noon. Chief West stated he talked with Mayor McClinton about upgrading the five new police cars that has been approved to become four-wheel drives. The police commissioners voted to refer to the full-body council for disposition. Costs for upgrading those cars to four-wheel will be approximately three thousand five hundred dollars more than the original estimate. Other issues discussed were loud noise, especially loud music. Commissioners will be looking at ordinances to see what upgrades are needed to curtail if not putting end to this nuisance. There was lots of discussions on this. There was lots of discussions on this issue. Illegal power dumping was another issue that we discussed. Chief West suggested that blue lights be placed in strategic locations where the dumping is most prevalent. No actions were taken on that, on that, uh, suggestion, and basically that ended our meeting. The members present were Lorraine Muhammad, Melanie Hutchinson, Charles Willis, James Hope, and Willis Monday. Others present at the meeting were Councilor Tracy Cat and newspaper reporter John Rec. That ends my report.
Thank you. Parks?
Parks, yes, sir. We had, there was a Parks Commission meeting in January, but it was a generic Zoom meeting, and for some reason or the other, I never could, uh, log onto that. But I did download some information that was, uh, that was sent to me by the Parks Director, Mr. Lorenzo Parker. And here I have about 15 park projects that they want to work on in the year 2021, and there, since the meeting is so very well spent already, I would not dare read all of those off at this point, but I do have copies to distribute to each council members. Also, I have a schedule for the 2021 tournament, um, schedule at Tilden Rogers, and I will also pass this out to, uh, the council members. If not, I'll have it ready for them, for it to be in your package at the next council meeting, and that ends my report.
Airport? Utility?
The, uh, utility commission, because of the bad weather during that one week, we met on February the 25th, um, and, uh, the safety report was presented by Brett Sims. Um, there was 100, there's been 107 days since the last recordable injury and 491 days since the last lost time injury. Uh, the utility currently has 12 open positions out of 83 budget positions, and, um, F and A was approved for hire for the design of the Owens Substation Control Building. And then, General Manager, uh, Todd Peterson talked about the, uh, fuel adjustment that people are gonna see on their utility bills, uh, for that one 10-day period there when it was some, uh, some freezing temperatures. And, uh, the decision was made to break it up on three different months so that everybody wouldn't see one big lump sum at one time, and that motion passed. That completes the utility commission.
Okay. Public Works?
Uh, Public Works, um, I've got the report from the meeting before last that we had on February the 9th. Um, I do not have the notes from last meeting, uh, this past week, but I will go ahead and report on the, uh, Public Works from February the 9th, uh, the, uh, I'm just gonna do a summary, the fleet report, um, all in, all in all, there were, uh, 12 operational trucks available at that time when we had the meeting. We also had a, um, uh, I think Council Hope pointed out the importance that we service the nursing homes and the healthcare facilities because they are fine when the garbage is not properly placed. Then I'm gonna drop down to the city engineer report, to the South Loop, the right-of-way process has started, the contractor has started reaching out to the landowners. The 10-mile Bio Project, uh, submitted 60% to A, RDOT, and have received some feedback. We are currently seeking more, uh, CM, CMAQ funding to complete that project. The, uh, Lear Street Bridge replacement, uh, we've run into some right-of-way issues there due to some property lines that were drawn, uh, they're starting to work on that. Uh, the Rich Road Bridge, uh, we're looking at ways to fund the replacement of that bridge at an estimated cost of $800,000. Moving over to the, uh, um, the Reading Street Bridge, there's been some discussion about the Reading Street Bridge is making it a pedestrian bike bridge, um, rather than a, uh, traffic bridge, and, uh, nothing, nothing definite's been, uh, decided on that bridge, but, but, uh, that's kinda some scuttles going around about that one particular location. Uh, code enforcement, uh, George Phillips reported that, um, the city had towed a dozen vehicles, uh, for the month of January and February, and he had collected $14,521 in fines, uh, for that same period. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilman Crone. Farmy?
Yes.
Harris?
We have more personnel there, so we really need to trust that. We met, um, on the 24th, we met on the 24th, because they're, they had a lot of time, so they got that long, we, uh, discussion, we had time for it. Uh, main discussion was overtime. It's overtime, that it was trying to get a new policy for overtime, put that on, but that's what it seemed like, it's really the current preferred policy. So they come up with a new policy, um, that's trying to decrease the overtime, so I thought that was really discussed there. And then New York Jones, who's in, and he's gonna be over there about far. Uh, the UMS calls, as of late, we have 800 calls. Usually normally be like 400, but we have 800 that are dealt. BMS budget is almost 75,000, as of then, it probably had a lot to do with overtime.
Thank you, Councilwoman Harris. Uh, did budget?
Budget, yes, ma'am.
Is overlooked anyone? All right, uh, I had no appointments, no presentations, uh, anyone having the announcement?
Mayor, may I ask, uh, Nick, uh, to come up and talk about the, uh, vaccine, I think it's gonna be tomorrow?
Well, let me, let me call up, Mr. Steve Jones, will you come forward with this information? I seen Director Rose, she gone?
Steve Jones, uh, assistant to the mayor. Um, what was your question?
Information about the vaccine drive.
Okay, um, there's the, uh, the vaccine drive that obviously was moved a couple of times, uh, because of the inclement weather, and the second time was because of the lack of the availability of the venue, which is gonna be Lear Arena. So it will be tomorrow from 8:00 AM until 6:30, I believe, at Lear Arena. Uh, those individuals who had gone online and made, uh, reservations for the very first one that we had scheduled, those same times still, still will apply on tomorrow. In fact, I've been back there going back and forth with their little rock crew on some of the logistics, um, throughout the council meeting. So they already in town, uh, we won't be able to get into the venue until late tonight, around 10:30, 10 o'clock, I think, because of, um, some sports activity that's going on over there. But the school, um, they've been very gracious to allow us to use the venue at no cost so that we can get 1,000 people in this community vaccinated.
Is it, uh, um, do you know if all the slots are taking, taken out?
Um, they had maxed out, um, several weeks ago.
Okay.
Uh, but people were dropping off because in the interim, some people had gone to other places. Marion Pharmacy was doing it, East Art, uh, has been doing it, and some have gotten, but I haven't gotten an update. I think they were close to where they wanted to be because they wanted to make sure that they allowed for an opportunity for the individuals who were volunteering, who wanted to be vaccinated to get a vaccination.
Steve, would you repeat the times again tomorrow?
Uh, 8:00 AM until 6:30.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any additional questions? Yes, sir.
I think we said something that I did, I guess, about the use of, uh, we, uh, for the computers that we had, if they wanted to use them or something.
Yeah.
Good point.
Ever needed 10 computers?
10 computers, yeah, and so if anybody goes comfortable. Oh, great.
I, I got two.
You got three.
Two, three. Councilman Crone, you had done that, John?
I don't know, I'm thinking about it, I, you know, there's a lot of good stuff out there.
You just opened it up for the first time?
And, 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 uh, just so you know, in case you were concerned about what they're gonna do with them, I think they said they're gonna have a jump drive that they'll put on the information that they'll be using, they'll stick a drunk, jump drive in, and when they, uh, complete with their efforts on tomorrow, they'll take it back out, so nothing will be left on the computers, and they'll sanitize them and get them right to you.
My ass reached today murdered anyway, so if anything goes wrong, you can put it in here.
I'm, I'm, this is, this is fine, I'm, I was just messing with you guys, but this, you can come get this right now, Dick.
My, my stuff over here under someone else's name, which is more than I don't.
Great, thank you so much, I appreciate it. All right, anything else, Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
Were there any other announcements? Not hearing none, like a motion to second to a adjournment?
So moved.
I'll hear about it.
Oh.
But I have to vote yes adjourn.
Oh, yeah, let me, let me, hold, where you go? We only got five council members, so I have to vote yes adjourn.